Maybe we're not mad. Are they back there today? Something's happening. All right, here we go. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. I am Commissioner and Chair of the Board, Rick Vest. To my left is Commissioner and Vice Chair, Krista Yocum. And to her left, Commissioner Matt Schulte. To my right is Commissioner Chelsea Johnson. Would you please stand with us and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to Item 1 Minutes, 1A. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on August 26th, 2025.
I move approval.
Motion in second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 1B. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Budget Meeting held on August 26th, 2025.
I move approval.
Motion in second to approve the minutes of the Budget Meeting. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2 Claims, 2A. Approval of the claims processed through August 29th, 2025.
I move approval of the claims.
Motion in second to approve Item 2A. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2B. Approval of a claim to the Mediation Center in the amount of $4,000.
Second.
Motion second to approve 2B. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Epstein.
Motion carries. 2C. Approval of the claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period, provided in Nebraska Vice Statute 23-135. For Inticonnex LLC dated September 1st, 2025, for a total of $15,281.86. JEO Consulting Group Incorporated dated September 1st, 2025, for a total of $6,157.50. And Nebraska Title Company dated September 1st, 2025, for a total of $450.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item 2C. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 3 is our consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items shall be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of: A. Amendments to the following county contracts: C-24-0600 with the City of Lincoln Transportation Utilities to Lease Office Space for Adult Probation, located at 901 West Bond Street; C-23-0964 with Nebraska Extension for the Administration of Lancaster County's Nebraska Extension Education Program to address ownership, intellectual property rights, and records retention responsibilities related to social media accounts created, maintained, or operated under Nebraska Extension; C-24-0549 with PMA Counseling LLC to provide gambling addiction assessments and counseling services to inmates of the county jail; C-23-0692 with Ferguson Enterprises LLC for the supply of ice melt; C-25-0577 with Anderson Ford to replace the original purchase order of a F-350 Supercab XLT 4x4 with a F-350 Regular Cab XLT 4x4; B. Amendments to the county contracts for interpretation and translation services for the following: C-24-0712 with Flix Translation Group LLC; C-24-0713 with Fox Translation Services; C-24-0714 with Global Interpreting Network Incorporated; C-24-0782 with Language Bridge LLC; Right-of-Way contracts with the following: Nicholas Crifels Sawtilla Road Improvement in the amount of $48,200; Kenneth and Michelle Watson Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the total amount of $762.07; C-Sel and Edina Holland Sawtilla Road Improvement, in the total amount of $18,400; Utility Permit 2660 with Windstream Nebraska for Fiber Installation at 1901 West Pella Road; E. Change Order 1 to County Contract C-25-0374 with ProSeal Incorporated due to need for additional sealant to complete the project; F. Change Order 1 to County Contract C-25-0350 with Judd's Brothers Construction Company to extend the final completion date to October 31st, 2025; G. A. Subaward Grant with Omni Inventive Care for the Youth Mental Health Diversion Program in the amount of $20,000; H. Grant Contract with Omni Inventive Care for the Youth Mental Health Diversion Program in the amount of $60,000; and I. Grant Contracts with the following: Omni Inventive Care for the Truancy Diversion Therapy Program in the amount of $12,845; Omni Inventive Care for the Collaborative Family Engagement Program in the amount of $10,270; and Cedars Youth Services for the Tracking Services Program in the amount of $26,000.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson? Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is our Public Hearing. 4A, a public hearing regarding the Amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
We'll now open the public hearing.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Perfect. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. And first off, I would like to thank Commissioner Yocum, Administrative Officer, Chief Administrative Officer Dave Durbin, and then Deputy County Attorney Candace Behrens for going through these guidelines in depth and reviewing them. Basically, and I've talked about this before at meetings, but general assistance predominantly operated off of medical need. And then when Medicaid expansion occurred, that alleviated the county of its statutory obligation of providing services for a lot of these individuals. While at the same time, we also had the pandemic relief funding that was providing rent and utility assistance to these individuals. So in the last year, then, what we've seen happen is we have guidelines that are targeted towards the primary medical concern, but we have this need in the community that we are statutory obligated in some aspect to cover assistance for individuals who are unable to provide for themselves. So we had to find a way to kind of meet in the middle with this on, okay, we need guidelines that progligate kind of how this works, what would make someone eligible for any type of assistance through our office. And that's basically what this revision does. So in short, if you go through here and if you have any questions, I might be happy to answer them, but it sets up clear parameters as far as what classifies a need for any type of rent utility assistance and sets up a method for individuals who arrive here and need to, need, want to go home, for them to get assistance in getting back to where, what other state they may have come from. So those are the two primary. And then we've also cleaned up just some different language around the medical aspect that we previously provided.
Are we seeing an increase in GA requests?
You know, I pulled that for last year and then this year for the same time period. So January 24th through September 2nd, '24, there were expenses of $81,000, almost $82,000. Predominantly, most of that going towards cremations. If we look at the same time period, but for 2025, that total is $127,000. So it's not a huge increase, but what is different is during this year, you see some rent that is being paid as well as some personal needs, those non-food vouchers.
How big was this budget before Medicaid expansion?
I could pull that up. Do you remember, Dennis?
Ballpark it if you please.
I want to say it was probably close to three.
I was gonna say four, but yeah.
I think it was not going to go over four. That's what I remembered, but yeah.
Great, great questions, Commissioner. I mean, and Sarah, this is nothing about you, but it's just our perspective that policymakers make decisions that sound really good in the newspapers, and then there's the ramifications that someone has to deal with. And like Commissioner Flaherty was mentioning, before Medicaid expansion, our budget on this was somewhere between $3 and $4 million in property taxes a year. We're hoping we don't return to those figures.
With the passage of, you know, the big ugly. For Congress, it won't take effect for a couple of years. This could have real impacts, depending on what state decides to do. It could have real impacts coming down on our GA budget in, you know, a year or two.
Yeah, yeah. Worth noting that there are ramifications of those decisions. Sarah, thank you for all your hard work on this. Commissioners, any questions? Sarah, you assembled the right team, so that was key to success.
Well, and I do want to thank Sarah because she, not only has she shepherded us through this, but, but there were others on the team who had experience in this field who added a lot. So that was really good.
She's, she's great at that. I've been shepherded by Sarah several times. It was always fantastic, so. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on Item 5A, Amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistant Guidelines? Seeing none, we will close Public Hearing 5A. Oh, wait, there's only one. We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Item 5, the Public Hearing Action Items. Item 5A is action on the Amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
Move approval of 5A.
Second.
Motion in second to approve 5A. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to 5B. Action on the Resolution of the Matter of Text Amendment 25009 to amend Lancaster County Zoning Regulations Articles 2, 4, and 13 as provided in Exhibits A through C. And Commissioners, I have a note to read into the record. At the August 19th Public Hearing on Text Amendment 25009, I noted correspondence that had been received prior to the public hearing. It came to my attention that a few names were inadvertently left off the list that I read into the record. To correct my previous statement on the record, I will now read the full and correct list of correspondence received prior to the public hearing on August 19th. The names are Mark Freyoff, Natalie Gunther, Andrew Stansky, Dustin Lorenzen, Amy Kittle, Sandy Hermisch, Tony Darrow, Paul Hombum, Mike Bynes, Kim Topp, Ally Backs, and Kim Robinson. Thank you, Commissioners.
I want to declare that I did have one, no, I think we all know, but as Commissioners, when we have a public hearing, we're allowed to receive testimony at that time, and letters can be put in as, on, on the issue. After that time, we're not to receive any further testimony. I did have a brief conversation with Ms. Topp and the other lady who testified at the public hearing due to the fact that I was confident I'd read an email from her, and I wanted to confirm that Kim had sent one in that wasn't listed. So I appreciate the clerk correcting the record, and I think we fixed that issue. And I did have a conversation with those two ladies, but other than that, I have no ex parte communications to declare. I don't know if anyone else has any they want to declare.
I actually had this wrong for years. Ex parte takes place in special permits, not tax amendments.
Oh, not, not tax amendments.
Oh, I thought it was any hearing.
Okay, I would have said.
I mean, go for it. You're not doing anything wrong by disclosing conversations yet. It's, it's, it's good CYA.
The things you learn by just showing, by just covering up here.
Good transparency. Nothing wrong with it.
Thank you very much, my friend. All right. With that, folks, we've heard all about the, this matter. Any motion or discussion? We can go either direction here.
I would move approval of 5B.
Second.
Motion and second to approve Item 5B as presented to us. Any discussion, Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I oppose this. I mean, we got, we heard very clearly from the public their opposition to it. The list there, the people that showed up. I think it's, I think it's, I feel like with some of the issues that have come up recently that our planning board is forgetting that ag land is also someone's backyard or can be someone's backyard. And so this is clearly an industrial use to put battery farms out there. And so industrial use should happen in industrial areas, not in someone's backyard, not taking away productive farmland or in their backyard. So I'm, I'm opposed to this tax amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else wish to speak? I, I am going to, I guess 25 cents worth of information. I am going to vote for it in that these are relatively small compared to some of the items that we've considered. And they will be located in very close proximity to substations, which are already in the community. So it's not necessarily a new, it is a new entity, but it'll be closely related to an existing one. So I do think during our time on the board, we are, we've been very careful to try and thread these needles about the rights of landowners to use their property for legitimate purposes, for profits or revenue streams. This is one more opportunity for some landowners who may want to participate in this. That's where I'm coming down on it. I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to add? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to Item 6, our special presentation, the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for July 2025 to Brett Rinkle, Corrections in the Category of Safety.
This is why we all came today.
Commissioners, I have the nomination letter to read into the record. Brent Rinkle, Sergeant at the Department of Corrections, has been selected as the Commissioner's Award of Excellence winner for July 2025. Sergeant Rinkle has worked for Lancaster County for 16 years. He was nominated by Sergeant Nick Vakasek in the category of safety. In his nomination, Sergeant Vakasek states, Sergeant Brent Rinkle witnessed a medical emergency involving a fellow sergeant who began choking on food during her lunch meal. Sergeant Rinkle saw that she was unable to get good airflow and had begun to panic. He asked if he could help her, and she nodded yes. Sergeant Rinkle then performed three back blows, which dislodged the food and allowed the sergeant to breathe normally again. He completed this task swiftly, calmly, and without hesitation, drawing upon his training. The action taken by Sergeant Rinkle prevented a far more serious medical incident from occurring. If not for his quick response, the situation could have resulted in great harm to his colleague. By recognizing the emergency and putting his training into action without hesitation, Sergeant Rinkle ensured the safety of his fellow sergeant. His quick and decisive actions exemplified the qualities recognized by the Commissioner's Award of Excellence. For these reasons, we are pleased, pleased to award Sergeant Brent Rinkle with the Commissioner's Award of Excellence for the month of July 2025.
Congratulations. It's our pleasure to recognize you for this effort and thank you for everything you've done. I spent a lot of years in the medical field and all the training that we do and hope we never have to use. It certainly paid off at this pace, and thank you for taking that initiative.
So it's funny that Commissioner Yocum brought up training because that was going to be, one of the points I was going to bring up is that, you know, we are really in a constant evolution of training within the department. And this is something that, you know, first, first aid and CPR, something that we do on, almost on a yearly basis. But that training's only as good as the person that you train.
That's right.
So it takes somebody with the, with the will and desire to do the right, right thing at the right time. And in this case, that was Sergeant Brent Rinkle, who stepped, stepped up when that was needed, implemented the training, and helped out another fine individual in our department. So congratulations.
Sergeant Prinsloo, would you like to come up?
Oh, please.
So this is Sergeant Prinsloo. We've worked together at least, what, 10 years? Too long. It's one of those things when you're sitting in training, you know, I'm doing this, I'm doing this. But in the heat of the moment, I stayed calm. I was able to save, like a sister to me. So it was for everyone that's sitting in training sometimes, and you're thinking, why do I gotta go through this again? There's a reason. Always try to remember something. And I thank all of you guys. I thank my Corrections family, my family for being here, and that I was able to, not just save somebody, but somebody I really care about. So thank you, guys.
Can I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
First of all, thank you guys for recognizing this fellow next to me. Him staying calm, I'm a CPR and first aid instructor myself. So that just gave me a little bit more confidence in what we are teaching. But I want to mention, this is not the first time that a member of my team had showed up for me in a time of need outside the boundaries of the jail. And not only when it's not personally me involved, I've seen a lot of people at the jail show up for each other. And the cliche almost sometimes of, I got your six, I can tell you where I work. That's not a cliche. And Director Johnson can be very proud of the culture that we have at our jail. Or it's part of our culture. When somebody is in need, no matter who it is, whether it be our custody staff, medical staff, outside the boundaries of our day-to-day job duties, we show up for each other. And I am very honored to work at the jail. And my whole team, I love you guys a lot. Thank you.
That is incredibly well-won, one minute, folks, because.
This is our chance to embarrass you.
Okay, go ahead.
We want to turn to, but that is an incredibly well-thought-out and heartfelt speech, and one of the best. So thank you so much for sharing that with us. First thing, though, Sergeant, before we get started, you have, you have family here. Would you like to introduce your family?
Yes, I have my daughter Chloe and Gemma, my fiance Erin Hanson, her mom Penny, my mom Wanda Rinkle. She did a great job raising me, guys.
Yeah, no, kudos.
You're not the easiest sergeant. And then my aunts Judy and Jane, and yes, they are twins.
Oh, nice.
And I'll just say one more thing. If you're choking and someone saves your life, don't finish eating the apple right in front of that person.
She was hungry. She was hungry.
I can chew. I promise I can chew.
Commissioners, any, anything you'd like to add?
I, I really was pleased to hear you bring up the culture of the organization because we see that, and it clearly was evident as I was walking into the chambers, and I saw all of the staff there. It felt a little bit like a family reunion as people were shaking each other's hands and giving hugs and that sort of thing. And so it shows that you really do care about each other, and I think that makes for a really good work environment. Thank you for all your contributions and your leadership, Brad.
As a former CPR and first aid instructor from a correctional environment, you make me proud, Sergeant.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for stepping up. Thanks for, just like she said, having, having your teammate six. It matters. It matters all, every day.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your work. Great job. Glad that you were there to help your teammate.
For sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for staying calm and reacting to the situation appropriately. Keep it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sergeant, we talked in the hallway there, and two things I just want to close with. The training is as good as the person taking it. I agree with Director Johnson. And it's a small deal until it's a really big deal, and then you're thankful for paying attention and learning. So thank you both for all that you do out there, and everyone else. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to Item 7, New Business. 7A, a resolution recognizing the month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month. And I'll read the resolution into the record. In the matter of recognizing this month of September 2025 as National Preparedness Month, whereas Lancaster County and the City of Lincoln are acutely aware of the need for public preparedness relating to severe weather, flooding, winter storms, public health crises, and various types of disasters. And whereas the importance of public awareness and education are key elements for better understanding of those characteristics associated with disaster planning. And whereas September 2025 has been designated as National Preparedness Month to provide a process for the general public to adopt disaster plans for home, school, and the workplace. Whereas Lancaster County desires to join the City of Lincoln and the Lancaster County, excuse me, and the Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management in a program to provide information relating to developing disaster plan for all citizens of Lancaster County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners that September 2025 is hereby recognized as National Preparedness Month, and the Board encourages all persons, organizations, and governmental entities in our community to support the activities surrounding National Preparedness Month dated this second day of September at the County-City Building of Lincoln Lancaster County, Nebraska, by the Board of Commissioners of Lancaster County, Nebraska. County, Nebraska, by the Board of Commissioners of Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Good morning. Jim David Saver, Director, Lincoln-Lancaster County Emergency Management. Preparedness is a message that my team and I promote year-round, every chance we get. Recognizing September as National Preparedness Month really focuses the added attention that we want on this very important topic. So, I certainly appreciate the Board's support of this ongoing effort.
Great, great timing getting this preparedness message scheduled right after we saw an example of an individual whose preparedness saved a life, Jim.
Outstanding. And things like that literally happen every day, every night. It's great when we can focus that added attention on the good work that's done.
We just never know, do we? We never know when those moments are coming. So, thank you for that. Commissioners?
I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Motion second to approve the resolution recognizing the month of September as National Preparedness Month. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven B, resolution in the matter of approving the Lancaster County budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, Budget Fiscal Officer. It feels like this is the end. We'll still have more, but this here is just kind of adopting the final budget. We talked about it at the budget hearing last week. In the resolution, the attachment this year does include a few changes. I'll just kind of hit some of the highlights. Through that budget hearing, we made the determination to drop the property tax increase by an additional 514,00871. That dropped it from a six-and-a-half percent increase down to a 5.96 percent. Couple things that kind of also came into play between the proposed and the final. Some of this is just cleanup stuff. One of the things is our wellness coordinator, Danny, is moving from Health Department to HR. So, I made that kind of transition. In our county sheriff's budget, they were willing to remove two vehicles from their budget as well as hiring of two staff. Just due to timing, won't take place until January 1 instead of July 1. The other big thing that was there was just the finalization of the Adult Drug Court. So, when you see community correction stuff, that's kind of cleaning that up, moving it around, decreasing that, and kind of finalizing that. So, those are kind of the main things that are in this attachment, A, to get the budget to the final place.
Another tremendous year, Dennis, by you and your staff and all the department heads that you work with as we try and thread that needle of providing the mandated services that we're responsible to provide for citizens and yet keeping the tax bill that we send them as reasonable as we possibly can. So, thank you for all of that.
You bet.
Commissioners, anything you'd like to add?
You said feels like the end. You just remind me, what else? What else?
Right. I mean, because everybody gets excited when we adopt this. And now, I'm kind of thinking, well, now I got to finalize everything, get it to the state auditor and all of that. But this year, a couple things will take place. This year, we will be attending the Pink Postcard Meeting, which is on September 18. So, we will be a part of that. We also then, from that process, we still have to adopt a resolution to finalize the tax request. Now, it's just another step. We're really doing it now, but there's some additional information that will have to be in that resolution. We've got to get that done because, you know, in October, you will finalize levies for everyone. So, that's kind of that piece that we've got to take place as well as everybody else so that you guys are ready to finalize those. So, really, once we get levies finalized, then I would really say it's kind of, the year is, the budget year's kind of over.
As much as a budget year could be over, right?
The budget is kind of one of those movies that has seven endings, right? You always think that was the last one.
Right. Yeah, you think you're done seeing me after today? You're probably not. So...
You get done just in time for mid-year.
Exactly.
Yes. It will. I mean, it just keeps going.
Very good. Commissioners, we need a motion.
I move approval of the Lancaster County budget for 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion second to approve the budget. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven C, a resolution in the matter of authorizing installation of school traffic zones signs near the intersection of 68th Street and Princeton Road in Lancaster County.
It's kind of a nothing burger, but it always drives me crazy. The engineer has to come before us. We're literally never going to see that. We don't know. She does.
Exactly.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, what I will say, Commissioner Flowerday, as an engineer, I'd rather be right than happy, and this is the statute. So, we will follow it.
That could be a motto for the department, rather be right than happy.
It could be. It could be. As an engineer, I don't always get to be happy, but I do have to be right. So, I've laid an exhibit up on the overhead here. It does show the signs marked in red as new signs. We did study this corridor. We are going to add a couple more signs. The corridor study did indicate some interesting things with this traffic and that we know that Norris, the Norris campus has actually two speed peaks at the end of the day, one at about 3:30 when their traffic lets out, and another one at about 5:00. And so, we are going to adjust the lights to match what the study indicates, and we hope to continue to improve the traffic in this corridor. You may notice the blue dots, and the blue dots on the overhead do signify injury accidents that occurred in the last five years.
That looks great. I know I've had the superintendent reach out to me wanting to talk about traffic, and obviously, he's connected to the project that's going to come down 68th Street. But glad to see through this process, we've identified some ways that we can improve the safety for people there. So, I would move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven D, resolution in the matter of certifying proper completion of County Bridge Q110 pursuant to the County Bridge Match Program Agreement.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. A bridge Q110 located on Pine Lake Road at about 120th, just a little east of there, was the last bridge that we replaced after critical flooding in 2019. So, it was quite a journey to get there. This bridge did use innovative technology and used the Valmont Press Brake Folded Tub girder. If you go out there, you'll notice that the bridge is also sized to meet future traffic needs. So, when we go to pave that road, which hopefully, I wanted to be this year, but hopefully will be next year. With that being said, this is the certification because we did get County Bridge Match money for innovation with this bridge. And so, I'm excited to certify this and close out this project.
Very good. I move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven E, authorizing the County Board Chair to execute a settlement agreement, parking lot lease, and related documents necessary to carry out the terms of the settlement agreement with New Generation Properties LLC.
I move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven F, special designated license application from the Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults for a fundraising event on September 25, 2025 at Prairie Creek Inn and Breakfast, in Bed and Breakfast.
Anyone here to speak on this?
I move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven G, special designated license application for Myers Wine Incorporated Doing Business as Myers Cork and Bottle for Reception Event Located, excuse me, Reception Event on October 18, 2025 at Roker Ridge.
Move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven H, lease agreement with B&amp;J Partnership Limited Doing Business as Speedway Properties for facility space located at 3940 Cornhusker Highway, Lincoln for the operation of adult probation services.
Jeff, if you'd come forward.
Can't believe we're getting this space. Good morning. Jeff Curry, Director of Lancaster County Adult Probation. Well, we're very excited about this agreement. It basically cuts our rent in half, which is really nice. And our staff are really excited about it, too, because it's just a good area, you know, on Cornhusker. There's three bus routes within six to eight blocks. And it's a little more of a therapeutic setting, I think, than where we're currently at. You know, it's all usable space. So, we see it as a win-win. Karen, want to add anything?
I've given my boss that speech about this space before.
You what? Sorry.
I've given my boss that speech about this space before. I spent three and a half years in this space.
Okay.
Yep. It's a nice space. No, you're right. It works. Totally works. It's a good fit for you.
Yeah, it's got some group rooms, offices, a nice front desk, and it's just the right size.
Easy access with bus routes and that kind of thing, too.
Yeah, and it's a great location in town for the population we serve on the north side of town.
Pretty walkable for who you're working with, yeah.
Yep.
Karen, anything to add?
Not unless you have questions.
Just really appreciate the initiative demonstrated here, Jeff, and the assistance by Karen that, you know, you saw an opportunity to improve operations and save money. And so, this is really a tribute to you and all the people who worked on it. So, thank you so much for taking this initiative.
Well, thank you. And we'd like to thank Karen and her staff for helping us, you know, getting the things we need and, you know, simple design layouts and keeping the cost down. And also, we'll probably be up here again with another, hopefully, building to do some drug testing. So, but we appreciate all the work she's helped us with.
Great. Commissioners?
Good work. I move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to seven I, contract with Americom Communications Corp. for security and surveillance installation, maintenance, service, and repair. The cost of the county shall not exceed $250,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven J, federal equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for Lancaster County Attorney's Office regarding sharing activity of drug forfeiture funds for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
I move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven K, Settlement and Release Agreement with Disrupting Traffic Incorporated.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven L, authorizing Daniel JZ to sign all necessary documents to settle opioid claims against Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex, Hikama, Individer, Mylon Sun, and Zidis.
Move approval. Second.
Well done, Mr. Clerk. That was good. Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item eight, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items related to county business not on the agenda and may do so at this time.
Any members of the public, please come forward. Any members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Good morning, sir. We'll need you to state your name and sign in.
Will do.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Hamilton, Hamilton Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of my client, Kent Pryor, Pryor Pines LLC, who resides in the area of 98th and Adams. We're here to discuss, just to simply inform the Commissioners of some issues that have arisen regarding the paving and grading project at 98th, from, I'm sorry, paving from Holdridge Street to Adams Street in the area of 98th Street. This project began on the wrong foot when Mr. Pryor and a number of landowners in that area were approached by the County Engineers' Office and were not disclosed any of their rights regarding the right to get an independent appraisal for their property and the taking that the county was going to have. That continued. They got off on the wrong foot then, and those wrongs continued when there were design problems from the beginning where culvert, the largest portion of this is that the culvert was resized after originally planned. And as a result of that, the plans, as they have been certified by the county with roadway customs and standards, do not match the as-built as it has been constructed. In other words, there is a slope on the sides of those roadways that does not meet minimum standards for roadway customs and standards. That places the county at odds with the certification that they've certified with that board. The other problems existing center around the fact that Mr. Pryor had a access to his property that was replaced with an access that is no longer workable. It is impossible for him to even get a vehicle to turn down the driveway and access his property with the way it was done. Those changes were all done by the county for the purpose of avoiding having to pay Mr. Pryor for an easement or for a taking. So, they brought basically the entire project, contrary to what was originally planned, into the public right-of-way, back into the public right-of-way, and in doing so, have failed to construct the project as it was originally planned and caused further damage to Mr. Pryor and his property. Significantly, another problem with this, as they have done this, is the planning has been inconsistent with the RUTS agreement with the city. That is that there is no, there is no planning in accordance with the RUTS agreement regarding flood and tenure versus, a tenure flood plan. So, there was some problems with the county and how they handled that in the sense that they haven't acted consistent with the RUTS agreement. They have been advised, the County Engineers' Office has been advised by Mr. Pryor of all of these problems, and they have failed to address any of them. As it sits now currently, the project does not conform to the plan detail and the modifications made during construction. They do not align with minimum roadway standards. The project has failed to provide Mr. Pryor with suitable access to his property that he had prior to the project. The project as constructed places the public health, safety, and welfare in peril because of the construction. The project does not comply with applicable local laws and regulations, specifically the RUTS agreement, and that requires that they planned consistent with certain flood, storm planning. The project as constructed does not meet minimum standards as prescribed by the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards. And in addition to... Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards. And in addition to that, um, it appears that the County Engineers' Office has misled this board regarding its compliance with minimum roadway standards. This board, uh, and the county certify compliance with the Nebraska Board, the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classifications and Standards. The roadway construction does not conform to the required standards. Mr. Pryor has, uh, as, in his, prior to his retirement, was an engineer. He understands construction plans. His knowledge throughout this project has been shared with the engineer, the County Engineers' Office, and they have failed to discuss any of these concerns with him. Um, the concern that we have is that this, this means that the county has falsified 2024 compliance with Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards, saying, hey, we're in compliance, but we're not, because the actual property as, or the project as it sits at Mr. Pryor's residence is not in compliance. The roadway is not in compliance with those standards and customs. Um, and the problem that we have then is, as it concerns the county, there are significant monetary consequences to failing to comply with those roadway customs and standards that are based on this, uh, the county's actual annual roadway budget. So...
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for being here. Um, do you have a business card?
I do. It would be lovely if I had one on me.
My problem, exactly. Okay. Well, thank you for, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Um, any other members of the public wishing to speak on items not related to the agenda? All right, very good. Seeing none, we will move on.
Item nine, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September 4th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meetings are streamed, uh, live on YouTube and Facebook. L&amp;K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item 10 is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Right, one second. We'll now call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. Mr. Clerk?
A copy of the Nebraska Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Reading options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held in Tuesday, August 19th, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three are public hearings. Our first public hearing is 3A at the 2025 451 NF Tax Exemption Application for a Nursing Facility with a Late Waiver.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grimm, Lancaster County Assessor, Register of Deeds.
Before you start, do you solemnly...
Sorry, I now open the public hearing. My bad.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Uh, this is for parcel 17 dash 32 dash 300 dash 031 dash 000, the Ambassador Lincoln. Uh, this had a 451 NF form that was filed. It was filed late, but it was filed timely by June 30th. Uh, that is the, the last deadline that you can have. I failed to get it on the agenda any sooner than that. Uh, I did check with legal. They said that there wasn't any certain timeline after that. Um, the paperwork that they sent in, uh, everything was appropriate. Uh, we would just ask that it would have a 69% exemption, uh, for their Medicaid use. They say they, they cover a lot of Medicaid beds, I know. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, appreciate you getting this back in front of us. Um, Commissioners, any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item 3A, the, uh, tax exemption application for the Ambassador? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing.
Commissioners, 3B, our next public hearing is a hearing on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Gat South Sudan, Lighthouse, St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church, Vital Services Incorporated, Women in Community Service Incorporated, Sisters of Mary, Queen of Mercy, Bryan Medical Center, and the Lincoln Lutheran School Association.
We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Item four, public hearing action items. 4A, the 451 NF Tax Exemption Application for a Nursing Facility with a Late Waiver.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve 4A. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4B, uh, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the tax exemption applications.
Second.
Motion second to approve 4B. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items related to County Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Item six is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.